Okay. Okay, I'll call a meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. My apologies for us, our meeting just before this ended a little bit late. So apologies for the wait. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor of Coquitlam, and it's my honor to welcome you all here tonight. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be read to you in a moment by the city clerk. Counsel for the city of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that we hold a public hearing. Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of each of the proposed bylaws, and after which the floor will be open to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on that bylaw. Those that have pre-registered will be given the first opportunity to speak, and after that, the floor will be opened. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing, an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaws to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one on council has prejudged the outcome of these applications. But there are some rules that we apply to these to make sure that the public hearings go as well and as welcomingly as possible. It is not a question-and-answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the relative merits of the proposed bylaw with either council members, with staff, or with anyone in the audience who holds a different perspective than you do. So we ask that each speaker restrict their comments to the proposed bylaw on the floor at that time, be as brief and concise as possible, and that we ask speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak is able to do so. You can speak more than once if you've still got some good stuff, but only if you're providing new or additional information. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her views known without interruption. So to that end, we don't allow clapping or cheering or booing or jeering of any of the presentations made this evening. As chair of the hearing, I'm required by council to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, that becomes repetitive, views that the speaker has already made known to council members, or which becomes abusive in any way. Please note that if you wish to provide a written submission to be included in the record of the meeting, you must hand that submission into the clerk prior to the adjournment of that related item on the agenda. Please also note, council may not receive any additional information verbal or written after adjournment of the public hearing and prior to resolution of that item, either fourth reading or if it gets rejected. Immediately following the adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we'll convene a regular council meeting in order that council can give consideration to items on the public hearing agenda as well as items on the council agenda. However, if during the public hearing, council requests further information related to an item, consideration of that item will be deferred pending receipt of the requested information. I will now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the bylaws, the first bylaw on tonight's agenda, and the planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, your worship. First item this evening is application to amend the citywide official community plan bylaw number 3479. This is to support the implementation of the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center master plan and make corresponding amendments to the Northeast Coquitlam Area Plan, the Partington Creek Neighborhood Plan, and the Citywide Urban Design and Development Permit Area Guidelines. This is bylaw number 4742.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Item one is proposed citywide official community plan amendment bylaw number 4742 2017 in the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center master plan. The Partington Creek Neighborhood Center encompasses portions of seven properties located within the Partington Creek Neighborhood Plan and the Northeast Coquitlam Area Plan. A requirement of the Partington Creek Neighborhood Plan was the completion of a master plan for the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center to establish the center as a mixed-use node servicing northeast Coquitlam. The master plan is comprised of the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center concept plan, the street scape guidelines, and the urban design and development permit guidelines. The proposed citywide official community plan amendment seeks to implement the master plan by adjusting the boundary of the neighborhood center land use designation in the Partington Creek Neighborhood Plan, adopting policies to guide development within the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center, and establishing development permit guidelines to guide the form and character of future development within the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center. These maps show the land use designation changes within the proposed neighborhood center boundary adjustment. To the left shows the existing land use designations. To the right shows the proposed land use designations. This next map clarifies the proposed land use designation changes. The area outlined in red shows a change from neighborhood center to town housing residential. The area outlined in pink shows a change from town housing residential to neighborhood center, and the area outlined in yellow shows a change from neighborhood center to parks and recreation. Staff recommend that council give second, third, fourth, and final readings to citywide official community plan amendment bylaw number 4742 2017.
We have one registered speaker for this item, the applicant. On behalf of the applicant, Erica Tiffany is the planner.
Good evening, mayor and council. It is my pleasure to be here tonight representing the Strategic Initiatives Department on the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center Official Community Plan Amending Bylaw. So how did we get here? Well, in July of 2013, council adopted the Partington Creek Neighborhood Plan. In that time, an interim neighborhood center area was established under that Partington Creek Neighborhood Plan. Reason it was interim was there was also a complementary implementation strategy, specifically Strategy 6.1A in the neighborhood plan, that said further work will be required specifically to complete a master development plan for the neighborhood center to determine the most appropriate location for this mixed-use neighborhood node, and then to correspondingly amend the neighborhood plan once that master plan was completed. So this process was initiated in spring 2014, led by the Strategic Initiatives Department and a multidisciplinary consultant team that included expertise in architecture, landscape architecture, civil engineering, and a land use economist. It also included an interdepartmental city working group staff that provided strategic and valuable input at key stages in this process. To guide this master planning process, there were ten planning principles that were created, including making the neighborhood center the social heart of northeast, making the neighborhood center a walkable and cycle-friendly community, making it well-connected, providing pedestrian scale interest, as well as providing active programming of public spaces. It also stated to, we needed, it was important to provide an authentic sense of place within the neighborhood center, to design for the hillside, to provide a local-serving mix of uses, to incorporate sustainability measures both within the public realm as well as in the private realm design, and to create delight, innovation, and comfort in that master plan. So how did we complete this master plan process? Well, step one was finding Main Street. And how we found Main Street was we looked for the flattest possible site to support walkability, including walkability from on-street and off-street parking locations, as well as to maximize view corridors. This was essentially found in an area south of David and east of Mitchell Street along the future alignment of Princeton Avenue. At this location, we were able to find a street, the future Princeton Avenue, with an average slope of just 0.7%, which was a pretty amazing accomplishment when you consider the slopes in Burke Mountain. Step two was right-sizing the commercial core. That is to create a compact core that maintains pedestrian interest to ensure a vital, thriving commercial area with the ability to phase and add on to this commercial space as needed in the future. We did this, to ensure that we did this correctly, we had, as part of the consultant team, our land use economist measure the size and determine exactly what the right size of that in terms of testing the size and location, and that size was determined to be around 100,000 square feet, and that's comparable to the University City on Burnaby Mountain as well as Newport Village in Fort Moody. Step three, integrate the commercial core with public uses and outdoor space, i.e. synergy. This is critical to ensuring that we have a vital commercial core by mixing uses and creating destination-type uses with that commercial core. Step four was providing, is providing a supporting population, that is providing a range of multifamily uses to surround this commercial and civic core, as well as mixed uses along Princeton Avenue. Step five, placemaking. We're proposing an overall design vision that hopefully creates an authentic, cohesive, and memorable village that's rooted in its Burke Mountain setting, that's based on best practices, is based on the climate that we experience up there, based on topography, as well as the forest landscape. To do this, we're proposing development permit guidelines that will incorporate rainwater management, weather protection, response to topography, as well as response to the forest landscape. With these things in mind, Strategic Initiatives staff kindly requests that council adopt bylaw 4742, and also adopt by resolution the Partington Creek Plan, Concept Plan, and Street Scape Guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this? Sir? Your name and address for the record.
Timo Orava, 54132 O'Reilly Street, Coquitlam. I would like to say that it looks great on paper. It's a beautiful plan on paper, and I would also like to say that considering how dense the townhouses are, built nowadays, how they are built nowadays up on Burke Mountain, I just see that if it's, if the small, smaller town center is surrounded by these dense townhouse units and dense single-family homes, it's hard to establish the vision that how it looks on the paper. That's why I proposed, my proposal would be that council would consider leaving the center, the core part, the village core, larger, and maybe adding more green space, adding trails that connect the center to the river, to the Burke Mountain Provincial Park, and then creating that linked, linked villages. And it would be better serving, it would be better, it would be looking more like what's proposed on paper in reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this item?
My name is David Lee. I'm a resident at 1352 Kingston Street, and I prepared a statement that I'd like to read with your permission. Dear mayor and council, I'm here to speak in opposition of the proposed amendment for the following reasons. My family and I moved to Burke Mountain with the intention of becoming an integral part of a community and raising our family here because there is a vision and a plan to make it an exceptional place to live, one that is based on an enlightened official community plan that speaks of creating a bold new mixed-use neighborhood which is ecologically sustainable, economically viable, community-relevant, and a successful example of how a livable, vibrant community can be created in a mountain site, an environmentally sensitive setting. If this sounds familiar, it's because I've taken a direct excerpt out of the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center master plan. The plan's vision is to create an integrated community that achieves and maintains a vibrant and exciting social gathering place which is diverse, walkable, and will act as an economic hub of northeast Coquitlam, which also aims to achieve council's key objectives, which include a high-quality mixed-use hillside village center that attracts residents to use it year-round, to ensure that the plan is viable from a market perspective, and to significantly enhance the value of the city's lands in the neighborhood center. In my limited opinion, the proposed amendment flies in the face of the OCP's vision and council's key objectives. I see no logic or rationale as to how reducing the original neighborhood center by approximately 50% combined with converting the land that was originally slated for community amenities into medium-density housing combined together with what I suspect is an unanticipated number of secondary suites, adding even more residents to what is and will continue to be a neighborhood that is lacking in community amenities now and for years to come. Walkable, economic hub, village center that attracts residents, viable from a market perspective, enhance the value of city land. In my limited opinion, reducing 50% of the land that was originally designated to be part of the neighborhood center will result in the exact opposite of what the vision and council objectives are trying to achieve. Enacting the proposed amendment will drastically affect the critical mass necessary to make it a destination to the effect that the community that it is supposed to serve will get in their cars and drive somewhere else, resulting in a less-walkable suburb of yesteryear, all short of achieving the value of city land that is possible, offers a severely compromised economic hug, hub, and lacks the critical mass necessary to attract the desired amount of residents that are needed to create a bold, new, mixed-use neighborhood which is ecologically sustainable, economically viable, community-relevant, livable, and vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. My name is Isabella Sylvester. I live at 3488 Galloway Avenue. I've lived in my, on Burke Mountain for the last four years and have seen many amendments come through on this mountain, and I'm here to, I'm here to raise some concerns of the number of amendments that have been put into the original OCP. So the OCP is this master plan which many of us bought into. Lots of consultation was done, including with the northeast ratepayers, which I am involved with, and with this, there are so many different piecemeal amendments to original lots of land that were single home to townhouses. The amount of land that has been changed in increasing the densification is enormous, and I'm watching this over and over again. What is concerning is that this one-off may not seem so bad, but when you start putting them all together, it becomes concerning because the amount of traffic, the amount of congestion that's coming into place by allowing more densification, we need to consider parking, and I'm not sure, from looking at the original OCP plan that didn't adjust and account for parking in the first place, which we now see as issues happening in the mountain, whether that's being taken into consideration when we're planning this out. So my concern is that there is a law that needs to be done, and maybe we need to halt and look at the original OCP plan, bring it back together, because right now, it looks like a quilt, and there's a lot of different amendments that we need to relook and recreate that plan with all the amendments that has happened since the original time, including the schools that are now concrete in place, including where now the community center is not in place, and having a plan that we can now move forward. So that would be my recommendation, is that we stop, halt, and look, and reassess what we're doing going forward. The other concern is that I'm usually part of, I usually get notifications through the council news. I was not notified about this amendment, and I don't see some of my fellow colleagues who usually get their notifications about such important matters as this from that. And so it was on Facebook, and it was also in the newspaper, but many of us on the mountain do not receive newspaper or are not on Facebook. So my, my just bringing it a, attention, I confirmed that with a staff member at the city who also confirmed with me that they did not get the announcement from the council news. So my recommendation is this needs to be brought up another hearing so that there's fair announcement to the public for there to be a proper notification. In addition, when matters are such as of importance and deals with such magnitude, not just with our own communities, this involves all Burke Mountain, that such announcements and amendments are not done during the summer months. July and August for such matters as this is not an agenda item. This could have been well put in in June when people were still here. Many of us are on holidays, and this is really not fair to have people who are out of town are just not even aware of these matters. So I would like to put forward that when matters of this magnitude are being put up to place, in consideration in terms of when these are placed and announced. And lastly, again, I just really would like to applaud that, you know, with increasing the densification, parking is a huge matter and issue, and so before we keep moving through, we need to really think about how we're designing this plot. It is 50% less of commercial space that has been designed. That was not the intention, and when you're looking at the right size as per the slide beforehand, if you look at University and Newport, those are flat parcels of the land. The topography in that is very different than the topography on the slope on our land. There will be much wasted land there, so even though the demographic size is equal to Padilla SFU or Newport, it is not fair to look at that as a right size because there will be a lot of wasted space because of the hill slope that is really not designed for anything that can go in there. So I would, again, think about what, how we're adjusting those sizes, and again, the comparison of the right size has not been made fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor O'Neill.
Yes, thank you. Question for staff based on the presentations of the last two speakers, because the most recent speaker suggested that with the change from neighborhood center to town housing residential for the western part and the southern part, that would have too much density. The speaker before suggested that reducing the size of this won't make it viable because it'll be, I think suggesting that it's not going to be enough density to make it viable. Can staff, someone on staff, enlighten us as to what the density difference would be between those sections that are changing from neighborhood center to residential, a town housing residential? Because I know neighborhood center generally would have some commercial on the bottom and at least along Princeton Street, and housing on top, but generally speaking, what density difference do we see in these areas that are changing, proposed to change?
Mr. Fuji.
Through the chair, through the chair to Counselor O'Neill, the report outlines the sort of general manner, the change in sort of the land use designation. So currently, the neighborhood center designation within the Partington Creek Center, Partington Creek Neighborhood Plan is approximately 68 acres, and under the proposal before this evening, it's proposed to sort of reduce the size in the neighborhood center to roughly 35 to 40 acres. And much of that reduction, though, as Ms. Tiffany indicated in her presentation, was that the, through the, through the analysis or through the master plan process, it was identified that the, you know, the most, the appropriate optimum size of commercial floor area within this, within this center should be along the lines of 120,000 square feet. So what the plan intended to do is balance the, sort of the amount of sort of good, viable, vibrant, active commercial space that could serve the residents up in Burke Mountain and in northeast Coquitlam, and also the same, but the, but the balance, the economics of, you know, not having either a, you know, vacant storefronts, or for that matter, sort of undeveloped parcels of potential commercial land, but balanced that with the more multifamily opportunities to create that, much more of that, the vibrant sort of center that the Ms. Tiffany, Ms. Tiffany had spoken about in her, in her presentation.
Right, and I certainly understand and agree with, I'm not the expert in the economic and land use analysis, so I do take that at face value, but in terms of population projections, or people per square, people per acre or something like that, those areas that were neighborhood center and are proposed to go to, that currently are neighborhood center, and are proposed to become town housing residential on the map, they're on the west side and the south side, surrounded by the red there, what will there, what is that population density likely to be per acre compared with the population density it would have been if it had remained neighborhood center, if it would remain the same as it is now, without the change? So have there been those population projections done? Because I think that will speak to the points raised by the last speaker and the speaker before, who seem to have differing opinions on the impact here. I'd just like to know what the impact, what you think the impact would be on population for that area that's currently outlined by red. If it stays the way it is, what's the population per acre or whatever, what will the population per acre be if it changes to town housing? Do we know that?
I think Mr. Fuji is looking that up.
I'll ask the question another way to give him time. And thank you for taking the time to look it up, and maybe Strategic Initiatives has...
Perhaps we can ask the applicant, but we don't normally ask the applicant when staff were present during the question period of a public hearing, and I can refer to the applicant, or the applicant might point the numbers out, or Mr. Fuji might know them. Otherwise, we'll go to the applicant. This is a, there's subtle realities here, where everyone at that table works for the city of Coquitlam, but some of them wear a different hat in that Strategic Initiatives is a land, is a developer as well. They actually do manage the land portfolio of the city of Coquitlam, so we always try to separate those functions because we have a regulatory function as council, trying to decide what's best, and they have an applicant function. They have to manage the resources, and we say yes or no on the regulatory side, not on the, and I'm going to go to Mr. McIntyre, who, there you go, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, worship. I understand the confusion there, and Mr. Fuji will check the specific numbers, but maybe just the back of a bit, and I, the village center area, yes, was larger in the neighborhood plan, and, but that was done with, it's better to have more in than not, and it was always with the thinking that with more detailed planning for that area, and that planning on a number of levels, it's a better understanding of the site, and Ms. Tiffany talked about finding that, that sweet contour for a Main Street, more information around the parks and recreation piece and facilities fitting in there, that came more into focus. I think also, too, we had a better sense around economically what was viable for a commercial area. All that helped in better defining what the village center should be. Now, the village center, as I said, was larger at first, best to have it in and out, but also, I recall through the Partington Creek Neighborhood Plan, it provided for quite a range of housing options in that area. Again, this is, mine is a few years back, it's a neighborhood planning stage, it didn't want to prescribe lock it in, cast it in stone, that this is townhouse, that's two-story, that's three-story residential or mixed-use. It wanted to provide a range of housing types and forms in that area. Now with that information in hand, there's, it's quite clear, there's a, an interest and need, very clearly a need for town housing in the area.
and need, very clearly a need for town housing in the area. But the core itself would be of fairly high density, I would imagine. There's options in there for mid-rise, going up to six to eight stories, I think. We want to make sure there's that, that potential, along with something like you would see in Newport Village in Port Moody, that's residential, couple floors residential above at grade shops. My hunch would be, I would bet in the end, I could be wrong, I would suspect it's roughly awash in terms of the number of units under the original plan as compared to what's being proposed tonight. Because again, we don't really know precisely how much density will be built in that village center area. It provides that full range, and I think there's some pretty generous density there, which is ultimately necessary to support those businesses. And I imagine the market will take advantage of that in time. The townhouses, that's coming into, clearly into focus. I would suspect it's roughly awash there in the number of units and residents, but George might have more precise information.
Mr. Fuji.
Through council and expanding upon Mr. McIntyre's commentary, the original plan had envisioned a range of dwelling units within the neighborhood center. It was quite a range from roughly 300 up to 2,000. And because of that large range is one of the reasons why the, one of the implementations pieces of the plan was to do the more deep dive and to the, sort of the fine tuning of the, of the land use mixes in the area. And so where we've landed with where we are today is on the high end of approximately 2,000 units, which the piece, which the Parton Creek Neighborhood Plan had initially envisioned, and that's where we're landing today. It's approximately 2,000 units before and 2,000 units today within the neighborhood center.
So I understand this. So the old neighborhood center was larger and the upper, the upper range was 2,000 units in the, in the larger one. And now you're saying there's probably going to be up to 2,000 units in a smaller, more condensed one. Therefore, in, in the area that's now, that would be excluded, there'd be townhouses, you add those to the, to the proposed new neighborhood center, you're bound to get therefore a projected increase in the overall number of, overall number of units that are in the area that was once, currently is the neighborhood center. Okay, so you don't have the specific number. And of course, there's no guarantee on any of this because we don't know what developers are going to say the market would sustain. It is always open for any developer to come to us and say, I know you've got this in the OCP for this, this designation, but we really don't think it can sustain that, or we think it can sustain more than that. And they can come to us and try to persuade the planners, and the planners would come to us as well. So even with the neighborhood plan, town center plan, nothing is written in stone. But generally, what I'm hearing is that overall, this is an overall increase in density then.
I'm not, I'm not sure. At the risk of waiting, I'm not sure I would reach that conclusion irrespective of the numbers. From my perspective, the original vision of the town center was to be more, the red area was to be more dense than the surrounding areas. So shrinking the red areas, to me, would imply less density in total on the mountainside. I can recall very clearly seeing the artists rendering and all through the red area were going to be semi-towers, you know, eight to 12 stories and townhouses around it. So we're shrinking the tower area because we don't think it's viable there. The towers should be more in the town center and replaced with townhouses. But I would argue that there might even be less density on the overall mountainside because of the less number of high-rise towers, the area for them.
Right, and that was a major change that we heard. I know in the original vision, I think we saw some, you know, a large number of towers in some of the first sketches, and those have been scaled down to sort of mid-rise. I guess it's in the, so that would be lower. But anyway, I just know what I heard there and I know what I heard here, we, something's up in the air then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilor Reed had a question.
Thank you. My question is through to Mr. McIntyre. So I think if I look at the same dilemma in the reverse, what made us decide that making a smaller commercial area was the right way to go?
Yes, thank you, worship, and through to Councilor Reed. Now, I'll offer some initial comments. Again, if Mr. Fuji has additional comments he may wish to jump in. What I understand is that, as I said, one of the key foundation pieces to looking at the village center was looking at what the market is. What's the market that's growing in northeast Coquitlam? And we've heard from some nearby residents here. What is the market up there? What else is being supplied currently? There's a bit of a commercial concentration there at Coast Meridian and David. Certainly down the hill in Port Coquitlam, there's a lot of commercial that's been either existing or added down there. So given that context and the number of the population and they go through and they do an analysis, so many households, so much disposable income for this, that, and the next thing, what would be the market drivers to support businesses in that area? And they go through an analysis and make some assumptions and they draw some conclusions. And coming out of that, they'll say that if the population on Burke Mountain is going to be 30,000 by such and such a date, this number of households, that sort of income level, disposable income of this, here's what you could support. So many tens of thousands of consumable retail goods, so much in personal services. They'll break it down by category typically. And they'll give you a recommendation as to how much commercial space you might want to develop up there, maybe phased over time, that they could see that that market would support. If you build too little, you know, it won't be viable in a way either. If you build too much, a lot of it will sit there vacant. So it's, 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 it's art as much as it's a science in getting those numbers right. But this is what they're recommending and given that, that's one of the key pieces that was plugged in, I guess, into setting the, you know, the main building blocks, if you will, for the village center.
Mr. Fuji.
Through the, through the chair and to add to Mr. McIntyre's commentary, the, when the, I guess, the neighborhood center was originally sort of conceptualized in the, in the original Parton Creek Neighborhood Center, under the Neighborhood Plan, there was a recognition that the, the size of the area shown in the original plan, you know, may have been, may have been too big. And consequently, one of the implementation elements was to look at that, the large mass of land proposed and to fine tune it through the detailed analysis and to sort of come to grips with and really understand better sort of what the appropriate size and range of use and so on and so forth should be. And that's, so this has been the outcome of the master plan process is where we are today. But the, the original neighborhood plan had, it was very conceptual and provided some flexibility so that we could do the more detailed planning exercise. We didn't want it to have it too small to begin with, understand and recognize it'd be too big. So it was, it was a situation, we had a fairly large sort of blobby type shape through and fine tune it through the, through the recent master plan process.
Are there any lands? I think it all depends as well on how it develops and how it builds. And I personally would like to see it go hand-in-hand commercial and perhaps the rec center. Once we get two anchors like that and then we could see. So is there any, I think that would be a question that someone else is going to ask here, is there anything on the periphery of this village that would allow us to expand if we have to? The commercial core? Not if we have to, but if we want to.
Certainly being the, the property owner, in more of the driver's seat, the city owns
the lands.
I'm asking the driver.
Around the village center. So it really, it gives the City of Coquitlam one of those, you know, really unique opportunities to not only shape, but drive something very different here. I think in the end, I would imagine as the roads come eastward from the west, there's already the crossing of the creek and there's development on the west side of the creek and facilities going in there, like the new, relatively new fire hall, for example. But as we come east across the mountain, there'll be additional development that will sort of go towards the village center. And at one point, we'll have to make some major decisions and some investments in terms of opening up that village center. I would imagine at that time, it won't all be done in one fell swoop. And if it proves out that there's additional market interest in more commercial space, I think there would be that opportunity to tweak things at that time. You know, the plans can be amended. It would have to have a really clear and pressing, you know, market need for that.
But there is space.
There could be space both north and south into the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There was some, a question raised as to the grade of the land and whether it's appropriate. And I note that, of course, the, the streets that we're talking about are nominally horizontal, nominally flat. And I, and it's been compared to Newport Village. And so I look at one of the people here who might have some deep experience in, in the work around Newport and how it shaped up. I was actually peripherally involved. I was on the advisory design panel in Port Moody at the time when Newport Village came before us. And I thought, wow, that's, there's some slopes there, they've got some issues to deal with. I mean, it's, I think Newport and Ioka was at 11 meters and the other end of that block is at 31 meters. And it's, is a big climb of 67 feet or something, six, seven stories of height difference. So I'm, and yet it worked really well. It, there's no, even that, that stretch, that main stretch, the thing we think of as the main drag Newport itself is, I think, rises some 15 feet over the course of its, to the toy store, from the, from Ioka up to the toy store. So I look to Mr. McIntyre, is, or do we have, do we have as a planning department, have any concerns related to the grades, recognizing that there's significant differences between the grades at one, at Princeton, say, and a grade at Burke Mountain Promenade? But then there's 10 meter, or not 10 meters, there's significant difference, I guess, seven meters between Guilford and Newport. And then, you know, it's 50 meters, 100 meters away. Mr. McIntyre.
Thanks, worship. Take me down memory lane there. Very, very, very good questions. Actually, yeah, you're quite right. And I'd forgotten that you come off Ioka Road opposite Port Moody City Hall and the new fire hall. It actually climbs quite appreciably as you come into the site. By the time you hit where the Brown's Restaurant is now, you don't really feel it so much, but it does climb through the rest of it, there's a steady grade. And then as you turn north towards the hospital, it picks up grade more, certainly through there. At the northeast corner would be the highest, but as a instance where you utilize the architecture to take advantage of that site and actually turn it from a challenge into like an opportunity. You can tuck your parking and service vehicle access in a low spot and create more pedestrian open plazas on the higher portion. So again, we've, we don't have concerns regarding the Parton Creek Village Center. George can speak more to the specifics than I can, but I, I think with the planning for the village center, you know, the first thing is, as Ms. Tiffany said, is finding that main street that wasn't too steep. And then you work above and below that. And I think this was some really clever ideas about, for example, the, a parallel street system down below that could then provide good vehicle access for loading and parking access down below. Up above would be probably buildings that would step up the hill. And I'm hoping, would like to see something we did on Panorama a number of years ago. But also with the slopes too, it creates some real, some real incredible opportunities. That's what makes places unique. Certainly around the plaza and stepping out, you know, cascading down and the views of that opens up going up the hill. Sure, there's some, you know, some specific design challenges, but I think it really can lend uniqueness to that space. So in short, no, I think we're quite comfortable with what's proposed and kind of excited to get at it.
Yeah, I felt the same. I mean, it's nine meters between, I've looked it up now, nine meters between Guilford at Ball Moral, straight downstairs with the pub underneath you almost. And you end up down at downtown at a level down at 16 meters. So it would seem to me that while there's design challenges, they're not design barriers, they're simply things we have to contemplate as we make sure that the thing is as functional as it possibly can. I appreciate it. I think that's how I perceive it. I look at Whistler Village and I look at, you know, various other places like this where there are significant grades and you don't think about them because you're, because it's been designed into the, into the hillside. So appreciate that very much. Okay, are there any other speakers to this item?
Hi, my name is Leslie Lee and I live at 1352 Kingston Street. I run the Burke Mountain Mommy's page that has almost 700 members. And I was also chair of the Where Are the Schools on Burke Mountain Parent Committee. So I oppose this proposal and I just found out today, so I have more questions than anything. This proposal is based on 30,000 residents, which is about the same size as Port Moody. So I ask, is, does this take into account the current census and the projections for Burke Mountain based on the current census? Does it take into account the fact that North Port Coquitlam has been expanding like wildfire because that's all people can afford? And so there is a lot of movement between Burke Mountain and the North Port Coquitlam communities. Does that take into account the secondary suites and all of the tenants and their children that live there? Because I don't believe so. There's so many new families on the mountain that when recently we were trying to get daycare for our child, there was up to a two-year wait in many of the daycares in both Coquitlam and North Port Coquitlam. Second question is, with all of these proposals, does it take into account the traffic, the effects on the environment, the effects on the community? The fact that we won't be able to walk as easily to get to all the shops that we'd like to because it has been reduced? When we were fighting for schools, I remember we stated that there was that loss in community because not, not, we have lots of parks. That's great for about two or three months of the year, but not for the 10 months where we get rain. And so I just wonder if the fact that we have to jump into our cars and drive anywhere to get to many of the shops that we'd like to get just on the mountain, what impact that has on the community? And this is something that the city can control, not the school board or the province. And if I understand correctly, if we're going to second, third, and fourth readings today without proper notice for residents to respond, that means we have no chance to have a reaction or to really state how we feel. When I found out about this today, I posted on both the mommy's page and the community page, and it was a surprise for a lot of people. A lot of the mommies reached out to me, they were on vacation, they didn't have childcare last minute, so they can't attend today, but they're very upset about the fact that this has been reduced. So we hope that there's an opportunity for us to properly respond. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other speakers who haven't spoken yet? Oh, Councilor Wilson has activated.
We've heard a few times about this not really being publicized as well as others, the public hearing issues have and that sort of thing. And also people feeling like they haven't had a chance to comment. So I'm just wondering, can we talk a bit about the public consultation that went on around the, the plan? And B, maybe if somebody could explain why it might not have been publicized like some of the other public hearings weren't? I know it was, I know they advertised in the paper and everything, like the statutory one, but the potential city email that, that might have had it apparently didn't come out or?
Well, I will direct the questions on the first part to planning and development staff. If you look at page five and page six of the staff report, it runs through the feedback processes and the number of interactions that took place there. And because it's an OCP, it would have gone through a section 475 process. So I will look to planning and development staff to respond to that portion. I can say from the official notification, legislation requires that we have two ads. See, Coquitlam runs three ads, and those ads took place on June 28th, June 30th, and July 5th. I'd also note in terms of letters, we mailed out to all properties within 100 meters of the designated area. That's 238 letters. Just to put that in perspective, often we don't notify at all. Just to put that in perspective, often we don't notify at all for a neighborhood level plan because of the nature of notifying in terms of letters. There would always be a newspaper advertisement. There are certain legislative and bylaw considerations of what goes into a mailout. Well, for instance, for the Coquitlam-Lowey Neighborhood Plan, there were no specific mailouts except to, I think, eight different organizations for what is exponentially a much bigger parcel of land or area of land than this. And in this case, we mailed out 238 letters. We put signs up, which is not a typical process for a neighborhood plan of this, of this type. And those signs went up on June 28th. So I think I would turn it over then to planning and development staff to speak to the fact that a mailout and a public consultation process took place as part of a 475. Those responses to that process are attached to the staff report, but I look to Mr. McIntyre to add some color to that.
Mr. Fuji.
Mr. Fuji here. Let me, let me respond. I can work sort of back in, there's been a series, there were, there were a series of public consultation events leading up to the, to the plan presented to you this evening. Back in September of 2015, there was a community information center when, where the, a community information session where the draft concept plan was, was presented. And there were roughly 150 folks who showed up to that session. And we, the staff received 40 written responses from the, that particular session. There was a project website launched in September of 2015 and which provided updates as, as new information became available through the plan process. And more recently, as Mr. Clerk, as the clerk had pointed out, there was the, the more formal sort of statutory section 475 notification, which we undertook in March of this year. And as Jay pointed out, we mailed out the residents and businesses within 100 meters of the, of the perimeter of, of the subject site. And in response to that opportunity for consultation, staff received four written responses. And there, there included as attachment six to your, to your, to your package. Then the report sort of provides some summaries of those areas of concern identified. And one of the areas was the reduced size of the, of the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center. But as the report points out, you know, and again, we don't talk about it earlier, was that, was the idea was to try to create a center that would thrive, be economically feasible, and at the same time provide that vitality for the center. That was sort of, you know, there was some commentary through, again, through the consultation that, you know, that there's potential for, you know, that maybe some of the buildings are going to be too, too tall, it's going to be too dense, not enough tree retention. But we've worked through all of those, those, those items. And as, as staff had indicated earlier, some of it will be, you know, the market response to, to the, to the opportunity presented up in the mountain. But the, you know, the majority of the buildings, we anticipate to be sort of four to six stories tall. The sort of the main environmental corridors, those sort of things will, will be, as shown on the plan, they'll be taken into consideration and through the more detailed planning. There's an extensive open space system being developed, part and parcel of the proposed future community center up in the area. So all of those sort of factors have been taken into consideration in what's being presented at the public hearing tonight for council's consideration and for the members of public in attendance this evening.
So I guess I'm just, just trying to, you know, make sure people understand that we're not trying to mislead the public. We're not trying to hide anything. We're not changing our processes in a, in a backward way at all. There's been lots of opportunities for public consultation. Unfortunately, sometimes these reports take a long time to produce and they're not ready to, to be presented, you know, in, in May or June. You know, sometimes things come in July and we have to consider them at the time. We've had all kinds of experts involved in the plan. And while I as well thought we needed a larger commercial space, the experts are the ones that say, no, we don't need a larger commercial space. You'll have businesses that are vacant and that's not good for, for the area. So, you know, there's lots of things that I think I wanted that, that don't necessarily happen because I, I'm not an expert on this issue. So I, I don't want to get too much into this. I can talk later, but I just wanted to clarify the public consultation and the notification aspects. Thanks.
Now, are there any other speakers to this item that haven't spoken yet? Seeing none, go to the second round, Ms. Sir, and then Ms. Sylvester.
Mayor, Council, just quickly to add to Timorava, 54132 O'Reilly Street. Quickly to add, I don't know, I'm not originally from here, but I see City of Coquitlam is very, has done something very well. City of Coquitlam has been successful. Things are being well done in the city. So that being said, I know where that fearful attitude comes from, that, that, that doesn't reflect the public consultation input at all. It's almost like a train. We come to these meetings, okay, maybe we didn't get notified enough, maybe we did this time, but we come to these meetings, we say, this is what we want, this is what public wants. But it's like a train that goes one way. It's planned this way, it's going to stay this way, no matter what you say. That's the feeling that I've got in the last four years, that I, five years that I've been in Coquitlam, or 10 years that I have been here in this area. Why is there that fearful, fearful attitude that the only solution is to build more houses? That's the only solution. Just build more, more, more houses, market once, that market once, that build more and more and more. Burke Mountain has to be the solution for the housing crisis. I don't understand that. I'm from a small town. We have 6,000 people there. We had more services than Burke Mountain has. Burke Mountain has tens of thousands of people already, already, and we had no coffee shop. And now people are being fearful that that's not going to be able to, the populace is not going to be support, be able to support this center? Come on, there's going to be tens of thousand dollars, thousand dollars more people, people coming in. The solution is to have a nice center. Have a nice center that can serve, service people up on the mountain. The people that are already there, don't forget, we have Burke Mountain, the auto vision that's just going to add another 10,000 houses or whatever. If we have a nice center here, people will stay up on the mountain. They don't have to go to Walmart or Fremont or Fremont. They don't have to go there. They don't have to try down and try and pack up again. They can just walk here or bike here and stay up on the mountain. That's going to, that's going to resolve your transportation issues. That's going to resolve your road issues. You don't have to keep making them wider and wider and wider because people want to get out of the mountain all the time. Maybe when they, when they, when they stay home, they can stay up on the mountain if they have enough services. So if you make it smaller and for whatever secret agenda that there is out there, that the housing has to be excessive, we had to have overdevelopment, wherever that's coming from, that's wrong. That's just wrong. The community will support the services. They will support the businesses. It's going to be, support small business community up on Burke Mountain if you let that to be that. And the City of Coquitlam is going to be the driver. The City of Coquitlam is not, shouldn't be controlled by market. Market is controlled by market, not City of Coquitlam. So the City of Coquitlam should make the decisions that make sense, not what the market says. And if you had to add some buffers there, just take it out of the contingency fund and leave some buffers there for future development. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring back the conversation about communication and just in, in respect to the community. So I have pictures on here on my cell phone of the beautiful boards that I don't know if the city or Westville pays and puts up. And they're gorgeous, but photos right after it says, before it, actually says, keep out in English and in Chinese to make sure that the public doesn't go into the area that has this beautiful billboard that says, item one, you know, public hearing, item one. So it's sort of hard to understand how the public is supposed to be properly notified by these beautiful billboards that someone pays. And, and so I will tell you that, no, those, that's one area that, that needs to be communicated better, whether the billboards need to be outside those lands that we have access to and we walk around. But technically, I bypass and I trespass, that sign says trespassing, I trespass on the land to be able to see what was happening. And the other piece, the 100-meter mailout, please consider, are we mailing out to the bears and the, like, not to be over the top, but there's trees in a forest 100 meters within that area. There's no residents in that area. So beyond the, the organizations that are being nailed out and the ratepayers, for example, were one of the bodies that are part of the OCP plan, and they are also people who are respective and have, have opinions and put in, and they're, they're also not approving this.
Okay, I'm just going to clarify one thing. That, are there any residents within 100 meters of the subject properties?
There's 38 letters that were sent out.
38? Okay. 238 was what he said.
238 letters were sent out. 30, 176 went to property owners, 34 went to tenants, five went to businesses, 23 went to secondary suites. There can be overlap of that. If you have a home-based business, you might receive two letters. But the, the number of letters overall is governed by the number of parcels that fall within the 100-meter ring that goes around the properties that are impacted. So I could throw on the old.
It's not, it's not 100 meters from the middle of Princeton Avenue. It's 100 meters from the edge of the parcel that's being adjusted.
That is correct. 100 meters from the edge of the parcel is being adjusted. These are large parcels because it's an undeveloped part of Burke Mountain. So the range of it is actually quite far from the proposed center.
My recommendations for the beautiful signs that are being put out is to put them in an accessible place, not within, behind the barred gates that people are actually trespassing to actually see what's happening.
Okay, well, I can't imagine that we would have put them in a place where you can't see them.
I spoke to actually Craig Hodge already about this and, and mentioned to him, which he actually went up to see one of these signs that were.
Wish he'd have told me.
I'm here now to let you know. Yeah, so.
That's not a statutory requirement of the, of the notice, but we do. We aren't, as others have said, we're not trying to hide anything here. This is, we have gone through long consultations, much more than any other property owner would go to. If this were a private property owner, they would, we could say, no, you have to keep the commercial larger. And he would say, well, you can do whatever you want, but I can only build so much. And I will build it and then I will leave that spot bare and, and.
You can do things good or you can do things excellent. And, and the city is.
I get it.
A city that is known for excellence, so we can always work towards doing things better. My recommendation would do to look at how we're notifying people and ensuring that we're doing a better quality of work and ensuring more people are notified.
Yeah, and we do that now. This was far more notification than would normally be required. Clearly, you're pointing out that it, it doesn't meet your expectations still, and I want to look at it again. Because the, the goal here is to make sure that anyone that wants to be involved, that wants to be engaged in this process is fully engaged. And in fact, quite often we get complaints that we're consulting for ad nauseam and let's get on with it. So in this case, clearly that's, the complaint is the opposite. So I understand. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to provide some added detail as to both the nature of the mailout and the location of signs in this particular instance. So what you see before you is the mapping that we use for every public, type of public hearing item in which the lines in the center will be the affected properties. And you are correct that even if it touches three to four feet of a property that is the subject of this amendment, we will go 100 meters from the far edge of that, that property. There would be, the mailout is done uniquely each time. So the reason I mention that is, as we all are aware, development is moving quickly on Burke Mountain and between a 475 process several months earlier and a process like this, property ownership changes. There can be subdivisions, there can be land purchases and transfers. So we redo the mapping days before the mailout, as close as possible to the day of the mailout in order to make sure that we have the most up-to-date information. This property or location is a bit compromised because the street system doesn't necessarily exist at this point. So we put four signs up typically for a two-lot subdivision in southwest Coquitlam. You'd have one sign at the front of a property. These four signs went up at the locations noted there in order to at least try and provide something extra. We wanted to be as comprehensive as, as possible. And added signs were in fact signs were, were not necessarily required in all of those locations. So we get, we get the challenge and we understand that, that things are happening quickly. This is the third public hearing in a, in a six-week period of time. There's lots of business taking place, but it is always the city's intent and specifically the clerk's office intent to make the notification as comprehensive as possible. Just wanted to add that, that extra bit. Because I, I think it is important. I think if you look at Save Coquitlam, our notification area is 100 meters. I can talk about municipalities to the west of us and two large ones in which the notification area is 30 meters. So the Save Coquitlam, I think, takes its notification responsibility seriously and then attempts to be as broad and diverse as possible, including running three ads rather than statutory requirement of two.
And looking at this, it's apparent that some people were notified that live a half a kilometer away from the center of Partington Creek Village.
These are, these are large lots, which I changed the nature of the mailout in a way that is not common to normal public hearing process.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. So that was the last two of the repeat speakers. Are there anyone else that wants, wants to speak again? There we go.
Hi, just Leslie Lee speaking again. I understand that the intention of making sure that everyone knows about today's public hearing and proposal was to inform as many people as possible, but I feel that the execution may have been lacking. I wonder if the notice was both in English and some sort of Chinese dialect because there is a high population of Chinese people on Burke Mountain that cannot read English whatsoever. And then also being that it was sent out two weeks ago, again, with summer holidays, people may not have been home to receive these notices. So I just would encourage council and mayor to not expedite the proposal today and vote on it and wait until September when we can get more people out here to respond and to give a reaction and to have the vote then.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers last time? Any other speakers? Councilor Zerillo.
Thank you. I just had a few questions around transportation. So first of all, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. And I actually did enjoy the, the cover photo and some of the changes that were made around the water features and the lighting and even the accessibility. So I just want to thank the proponent for that. My questions are around transit. I didn't, I'm wondering if we have any timelines for transit to this location? I'm going to ask some more questions around timelines, but do we have any indication of timelines where we might be able to get transit to this area of Burke Mountain?
Mr. Dillazegh.
Through your worship to Councilor Zerillo. Transit has been obviously a very important issue for, for this large area, which is going to be developed in some fashion. We've been having many discussions over time, over the last couple of years at least, and we continue discussions with transit. As you know, the mayor's 10-year plan is. As you know, the mayor's 10-year plan is under implementation, but at this point, unfortunately, we don't have anything specific, what will become available and when for Burke Mountain other than what we already shared with council perhaps a year ago or so.
All right. So my other note was around electric vehicles. Obviously, that's something that's getting a lot of publicity right now, and we talk about pedestrians and bikes, but I'm just wondering if we need to make accommodation now for electric vehicles in these sort of plans, or if that can come later?
Similarly, if you allow me going back in history a little bit, approximately two decades ago or so, there was no clarity whatsoever in the province of British Columbia as to what alternate fuel vehicles may gain more market share over time. It seems to be now that that has been changing, and the electric-powered vehicles seemingly gain more weight. So I'm privy to a recent conversation triggered by one of the Coquitlam residents, and I do understand that our planning department jointly with the engineering department, with our energy manager, will consider whether we can actually incorporate in the 2018 work plan to make more actual steps, perhaps even a policy as to accommodating more electric vehicles.
But so it doesn't need to be in this right now? It can just.
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay. So then my other question is about timing on development. So, you know, we're talking about this area, we're talking very specifically about the commercial core, and I'm just wondering, what is the estimated timing on even having a commercial core in the Partington Creek area?
Andrea Toma, GM for Strategic Initiatives. Timing on the overall delivery of the Partington Creek Neighborhood Center, we'll come back to council with a full detailed plan. We have to engage into looking at the resourcing, looking at what is, you know, achievable. We are not at a point where we have the full plan put forward. We are very aware of the growth, we're very aware of the market viability of the both residential and the commercial component. We are very aware of the community's interests and needs, so balancing all that together with, you know, counterparts in the city, looking after what interests we're looking to deliver, we're thinking that in the next five to 10 years would be a very high-level viable opportunity to move forward. But again, all that will be detailed and coming back to council for approval with a resourcing plan with the intent of how we're looking to develop the area.
So at least 2022. I'm sorry, through the chair, I wonder if I could just get a reminder of the, what year we slated the community center? We recently did that. I wonder what was the, can you just, can I get a reminder on that?
Anyone have the, for the clinic there? Mr. Alaweva.
Yes, we recently discussed, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong microphone, sorry. Yes, there was a discussion at the time when the Parks, Record and Culture Master Plan was presented to council, and that did talk about the Northeast Rec Center and the timing for that, and there's a number of variables discussed at that time. The timing is in the period of 2025 to 2029.
I thought that was.
And just to keep in mind that there's going to be a number of years here just to develop out the entire range of infrastructure required to set up the construction, the ultimate construction of the facility, which itself is likely to take three, two to three years. So when you take three to four years of building infrastructure, three years, three to four years of planning and building a new rec center of this size, you know, we're getting into the right period of time.
So thank you for that, because that goes into my next question, which is about the accessibility of the roads, right? So right now, we have David punched through, I don't know how far, because it's trespassing, you can't go down there, but when, what kind of timeline are we looking at to have a north-south road? Like even if we had commercial center going, what would be the access points in and out? I don't know who can answer those questions, but I want to understand. Right now, it looks like David is the only way in, and for how long is David going to be the only way in? And if the rec center ends up being first, what needs to be built to make that happen? I'd just like to understand how these are going to phase out these roads.
Your worship, let me provide some initial comments. I think George is just checking the plan here. Again, I think as mentioned before, and I guess where the current road dead ends are is basically along the creek, just opposite where the new fire hall is. And a couple of roads that'll be coming through there, Princeton, if you just want to look at the slide on the screen here, would be sort of the northwest corner of the Partington Creek Village Center. That's one road that'll be coming in, and that's a key one, of course, because that will be the main street, the high street through the village center. Burke Mountain Promenade down below, that's built up to the creek right now, and I believe it's roughed in on the east side of the creek. There's also been some rough in and clearing of roads south of that where they connect down to in the area of Roxton and further south down to the Baycrest area. So it was mentioned by Mr. Alaweva, it's a combination of getting the roads in there, first clearing those out, but also the installation of all the utilities, the necessary infrastructure, drainage going down the hill, water supplies coming up. So those would be the roads, of course, in addition to David Avenue at the top, which would be carrying eastward. My understanding that's happening fairly soon, probably within this and next year's capital budget, but maybe George has some more specifics.
I think that would be good to note, like which ones are already in the capital budget for the next five years? Which of these roads and how far?
Your worship, I don't have detailed information at my fingertips for the phasing of the development of the roads and utilities, but let me mention that David Avenue is the only city arterial in this new neighborhood, which is clearly, in a way, the responsibility of the city to build. For the rest, we need to rely on the developers, and there are obviously more than one developers who have interest in the area. And it takes some careful planning and negotiations as to which services and roads will be going first and who is going to pay for what. So unfortunately, I'm not in a position of having any more details on that.
Okay, so that's interesting. So if we look at Princeton, we need it. The old plan would have said that the commercial, right from the creek, that commercial would have to be built to do the road, right? Because the road comes with development, but now we've got town housing directly east of the creek. So there's more likely that's going to get built before commercial would get built. Does that sound like it could be true? I think it's going to be faster to get town housing than commercial?
Yes, yes, that is definitely true. One of the concepts that the original consultant team that looked at this said is that the concept of surrounding the commercial, or it was easier to put in some of the townhouses to create more of a critical mass to enable the commercial to be successful. A commercial is always more difficult to encourage the anchor tenants to come in when there isn't already a base population right nearby, and so that is one of the principles. So but at any rate, it is very difficult to create a mountain, a new community on a mountain. And from our perspective, all we are doing today is to try to refine the boundaries so that we can put proper planning around where the roads would be, where the sewers come down, exactly the scope of all that, so that we can get on with the next phases.
So then that comes to my last questions, which is something I kind of been asking since I got elected here, and that is like, who are the people that live on Burke Mountain? What are their lifestyles, their work, their recreation behaviors? What percentage of those homes are empty? How do they shop? Like, there's a lot of information that I assume was with the consultant that's behind some of this planning, but I feel like I'd like to have more of it. So I'll just put that out there. Do we have any, and I know the census data hasn't come out with the household survey and some of these other housing factors, but did the consultant, when they designed all this, actually look at who lives on Burke Mountain? Who are these people? What do their families look like? What does their work patterns look like, their shopping? Did the consultant do any of that?
Mr. Fuji.
Through the chair to Counselor Zerillo. At this point in time, the long-form census data is, StatsCan hasn't released it yet. It'll be coming out later this year and early into 2018. So that point in time, we'll have a much better handle on the sort of the demographics of the folks living up in Burke Mountain.
I think that'll be very interesting information, because we have a very young neighborhood there, and I'm very interested to see the patterns. I mean, we're all following the Burke Mountain Facebook page, and we know a lot about the people, but really getting to the ins and outs of their behaviors and stuff, because I think it matters in this fast-changing world. But anyway, thank you for those comments about timing and transit, and I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, any last speakers to this item? Any final speakers? Anybody else seeing none? I'll declare this item closed. Counselor Asminton.
The next item is, I'm declaring a perceived potential conflict. This is properties close to my home. You stepping out? Thank you.
Counselor Asminton steps out to avoid the perception of a conflict of interest.
Next item, item two is an application to Amendment Seve Coquillum zoning bylaw number 3000 to rezone the properties at 3473 Wilkie Avenue and 1238 Burke Mountain Street from RS2 one-family suburban residential to RS8 large village single-family residential and P5 special park. This is bylaw number 4699.
Item two is proposed zoning amendment bylaw number 4699, 2017, located at 3473 Wilkie Avenue and 1238 Burke Mountain Streets. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Burke Mountain Street and Wilkie Avenue. The West Smiling Creek is located within the western portion of the subject site. The subject site is currently zoned RS2 one-family suburban residential. The surrounding properties in the area are zoned RS2 one-family suburban residential, RS8 large village single-family residential, and RTM1 street-oriented village home residential. The subject site is designated large family, single family, and environmentally sensitive area in the Smiling Creek Neighborhood Plan. The applicant is proposing a rezoning from RS2 one-family suburban residential to RS8 large village single-family residential and P5 special park to allow for subdivision into two 20.1-meter-wide lots, each with an area of approximately 770 square meters. The RS8 zone would allow for construction of one single-family dwelling with potential secondary suite on the lot. The P5 zone will allow for the protection of West Smiling Creek. Each lot will be able to accommodate two parking spaces within a garage and one parking pad for potential secondary suite. Staff recommend that council give second and third readings to bylaw number 4699, 2017.
Are there any speakers to this item? You can speak from back there if you like, but you'll have to speak loudly. Step right up, sir. Please give us your name, Mr. Peachman.
Sam Peachman, 3469 Wilkie Avenue. Last time this came up, I was opposed, and you guys actually shut it down. I'm not too concerned about the building of the houses now because of your spia area and the protection of West Smiling Creek, but I'm more concerned, and you've done it all through the, all up and down Burke Mountain, is you're going to allow two houses, two suites, so that's at least six more cars, okay? And you're not forcing anybody to park inside their garage. Everybody parks out in the street. Now, what part of this don't you understand? When you turn around and take a building permit out, you have to provide onsite parking. You have to. It won't even get through the, I had to do it on my property, and you're not forcing anybody on this mountain to use their garages.
We have no authority to.
Yes, you can. All you have to do is put no onsite, no overnight parking. End of discussion. But what you've done here on Burke Mountain Road, or Street, you've got a narrow street there, and you're going to have six more vehicles where people are right now parking on both sides of that street. They can't get through. No big vehicle can get through, no fire truck can get through, nothing can get through there that's got any size. And you're going to allow people to park on both sides of that street? Why don't you force them to get into their garages by just saying, no overnight parking? That would be a really easy thing to do.
That's different. Restricting the parking on the street is.
Yeah, but overnight parking says that the people have to use the garage.
Just a second, just a second.
Okay, sorry.
You said, make them park in their garage. We can't.
I know you can't.
They can, they can park, if, we can make them park on their property, perhaps, but not even there. Well, all we can say is we can restrict parking on the street, because we own that. So that's one element we have. But there's nothing we can do to make them park in your garage. We can't make you park in your garage either.
No, but while you take a building permit out, you, the only way that building permit can get approved is to have onsite parking.
Yes.
It's pretty basic, thank you.
And we can't force them to use it.
But you can, yes, you can force them by doing, by saying no overnight parking, because then they'll have to clean all their junk out of their garages and put their cars inside. What you've made is unsafe streets where people are parking on both sides of the streets.
That, okay, that's a different argument. Don't let them park on the street.
Well, yeah, but you can do it, like, why don't, somebody should go through the whole Burke Mountain, the whole thing, and look at where you can't get a fire truck through, can't get anything safe through there, and allow people to park only on one side of the street. And there's all kinds of places. When you go down Wilkie Avenue, you can barely get down that street with any size of a big truck, any size. I can't, I can't, I can't get my trailer down there. So I have to go, that's irrelevant. But you can't get a fire truck down there, and you got little kids, they've got no backyards, so they come out in the street. If they come out in the street, you're going to kill the kid. You gotta get, you gotta allow, you gotta keep one side of that street so that people can actually see.
Okay, good, there.
That's my only thing I want to talk about.
Mr. Deozegi. The road network is built, I assume it's built at eight and a half meter?
Yes, your worship, the, both roads in the question are classified as local low-density, which calls for 8.5 mirrors curb-to-curb width. I personally had discussion a couple of years ago with one of the assistant fire chiefs who is in charge of fire prevention, and we went over some options for road widths, what would be the minimum road width that's acceptable to the fire department. And we agreed that with the 8.5-meter curb-to-curb width with parking on both sides of the road, the fire department is still capable of getting their trucks through, therefore it was acceptable for them.
Okay. But your argument is, your argument makes some sense, and we do, we are now looking at parking, as you know, up on the mountain. We're trying to figure out whether we've got it, got it right. But we cannot, for example, if we back up one slide, there's three cars on the apron, one of which is obviously doesn't have a garage, but the other two would have a garage space each, but we can't force them to use the garage any more than we can force them in my neighborhood to use their garages. And a whole bunch of us don't use our garages.
You've got a heavy population of townhouses south of this development.
I know.
Everybody parks in the street. They don't go in their property. When people pull out of there, it is, like we've had accidents, people come out of the complex, townhouse complex, and if vehicles are parked on both sides of the street, you can't. can't even, first thing, they park too close to the, to the corner, which used to be a bylaw that you had to stay back so far, because nobody enforces that anymore. So you can't even see people when you come out, out of the driveways. I don't have the problem because we've got some space, but these people on Burke Mountain Road, it is a joke. It is, and that's just one of the many, like, you go further down Wilkie where you've got incredible densification, again, little kid, if he comes out from those, there's no room. But anyways, you guys are the planners and I just don't see it. Environmentally, it's a doable thing.
Well, we appreciate you as always, Mr. Peachman. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers? Please step forward.
Hi, my name's Peter McKenna. I have property at 3470 Roxton Avenue, so this is just around the corner from me. And I wanted to speak in favor of it. It's, there's lots of people who will speak in opposition, and I felt there wasn't enough people to come out and speak in favor of projects like this. So I wanted to offer my.
Support.
Support for it. Exactly. I look forward to seeing this project built. I think it's a very good use of land and will improve the neighborhood where I intend to build my house in the future. Thank you.
You park in your garage? No, I'm kidding. Sorry, Shane. Are there any other speakers to this item?
The clerk will strike that from the record.
Yes, please. Are there any other speakers to this item? Discussion ensued. Third and final time, any other speakers to this item? Seeing none. I'll declare this item closed. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. The third and final item of this public hearing concerns an application to amend the city's zoning bylaw to rezone.
No, we went really fast without him. Yeah, we better get him. You can't make. Yes. Ever before has the clerk forgotten one of our council members outside the room. Mr. Clerk.
What happens in the meeting when the other member's not here stays in the meeting?
Item three is proposed zoning amendment bylaw number 4766, 2017, located at 518 and 520 Pore Street. The subject site is located on the west side of Pore Street, just north of Austin Avenue. To the east is Vaney Center, now the Encompass Alternate School. The subject site is currently zoned RS1 One Family Residential. The properties in the surrounding area are zoned RS1 One Family Residential, RT1 Two Family Residential, and SS1 Service Station Residential. The subject site is designated One Family Residential in the Austin Heights Neighborhood Plan. The applicant is proposing a rezoning from RS1 One Family Residential to RS3 One Family Residential to allow subdivision from two lots into three 15-meter-wide lots, each with an area of approximately 603 square meters. The RS3 zone would allow for construction of a single-family dwelling with a potential secondary suite. All three lots will have front access from Pore Street. Each dwelling is to contain a two-car garage and a parking pad for a potential secondary suite located along the south side of the front yards. Staff recommend that council give second and third readings to bylaw number 4766, 2017.
Thank you. Are there any speakers to this item? Any speakers to this item? I have one question for staff. There's a, one of the two billings, and I won't identify it, but one of the two billings on the site is, perhaps doesn't meet the standard of our maintenance bylaw. And sometimes we see that come up in an argument during the public hearing from neighbors that say, "Well, anything would be better than what we have." And I worry that we, if, if we take applications from where the existing property hasn't, hasn't met the test, and perhaps is derelict or is, has accumulated materials that wouldn't pass the bylaw, we put neighbors in a conflict of interest where they may well end up coming out to support the change that would be, that they otherwise might not. And so I, I only raise it again, as I've raised it in the past, that I don't know the solution, whether the solution is, you know, you cannot apply until your, your property meets the requirements of the standards of maintenance bylaw, but it, it's a frustrating reality that some properties don't meet the test when the application comes to public hearing. And I don't, I don't see neighbors out here today to speak to that question or any question, but I just, I'm done. Okay? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Councilor Reed.
Through you to Planning, please. I notice these houses are going to be about 4,500 square feet, and then there's a very small secondary suite of 768 in the basement. Is the basement smaller than the main floor, or are we likely to find two suites in there?
Through the chair to Councilor Reed, the 4,500 square feet proposed house size includes the second, includes the secondary suite?
I know that. So if you had 2,200 on the bedroom floor and 2,200 on the main, then you've got room for more than a small 760-square-foot suite. I'm trying, I'm just trying to see what are they going to do with the rest of the basement, like.
Through the chair to Councilor Reed, that there'll be the, you know, I, we don't have the floor plans at this point in time, but, you know, I suspect there'll be the standard laundry, furnace, those sort of things that you did, one would typically see in a basement would, would, would sort of be part of the basement floor.
I just find it small, a small suite for this size house, and I just want, I, I'm sorry? And I would just like to make sure that the builders know that one suite is in a house, not two or three. Thank you.
Okay. While they're insulting, I'll just make a note that the Schedule A, which is on the screen right now, to bylaw 4766, you'll note that the address 518 and the address 520 have been substituted with 524 in both cases. So since there are three addresses, 524, just making sure everyone's aware that that should be 518 and 520.
Yeah, so when we, if this bylaw proceeds to subsequent readings, we will ask council to do an amendment to Schedule A, just to note that change.
And then if it does proceed, then it'll change the addresses again. Okay? Councilor Reed, you're done? Okay, anybody else? Any further speakers to this item? Any further speakers? Last chance. Further speakers? Seeing none. I'll declare this item and the public hearing closed. In a few minutes, we'll convene a regular council meeting as soon as they've changed tapes and things, and we try to get a chance to get a glass of water.